I will call the public hearing to order.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Of course, our first public hearing is to accept public comment to allow county agencies to pay a bonus of one and a half percent of the base salary to their staff. And of course, this came about in the budget amendment that was recently passed by the General Assembly for the FY '26 budget. It provides a one and a half percent bonus to all compensation board employees, to employees of the DSS, and other various agencies. But before that bonus can be paid out, then the Board of Supervisors actually has to pass an ordinance that allows the bonus to be paid out. So that's the purpose for our hearing today.
Okay. Anyone for public comment on that? If you'd like to call in, the number's 276-333-0357. I think it's something statewide, isn't it, Mr. Martin?
It is. I know the teachers, I think, paid theirs out in June, and then state employees also received the one and a half percent bonus. But again, at the county level, in order to be able to pay a bonus, the county has to have a bonus in place that allows that.
That correct, Mr. Sandler?
That is correct.
There doesn't appear to be any public comment. It's 5:55. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to second.
I'll second it.
My motion is second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. We start the next public hearing, which is on the Board of Supervisor's salary ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Of course, this public hearing is for the salary orders for the Board of Supervisors, and there is no change proposed at this ordinance. Everything stays the same on their salary. The rate of compensation for the Board of Supervisors shall be $5,500 annually, and the chairman of the board shall receive an additional $1,800 annually, and the vice chairman an additional $1,200 annually. This has been the salaries for Board of Supervisors for many, 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 many years. It has not been changed, even though it really needs to be. You know, the amount of hours that you guys put in to pay your guests, you have a servant's heart. But anyway, to pay your salary, we have to have a salary ordinance passed each year in order to do that, so.
Anyone like to make public comment on the salary ordinance? Again, the number to call if you'd like to dial in is 276-333-0357.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like for the public to know, we take no mileage unless we travel at least 50 miles a day to a meeting or anything. So we take no mileage.
I haven't took a dime. Mileage.
Yeah, you definitely don't do this job for the money. That's time you spend. It's three meetings every week of some kind.
If some kind there is.
Maybe not all of us, but some of us are in meetings every week, yeah.
And then the phone calls, too, that we do.
Yeah, especially when it's storms.
If there's no comment on our salary, then, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing on our salaries.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. And our regular meeting will start in about two minutes. It's clock. We've got a regular meeting to order. Spartan, am I leading this? What's he up?
I think he went downstairs.
He had to go get something off the prayer.
Okay.
So he'll be here.
Anybody else want to do the prayer?
I would.
Okay, go ahead. It's all by our ass.
Fathers, we bow in your holy presence tonight, thanking you, Father, for the opportunity that we have to come and try to work out the budgets and present the budget tonight to the public and vote on it. Help us, God, that we make the right decisions. And help us, God, as we go from day to day, that we never forget to give you thanks and praise for all that you've done for us and for our families and for each home that's represented here, God. Those that are hurting tonight, we ask you to remember them. All these favors and blessings we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. You want to do the pledge for us?
No.
Got it. Sheriff Fleming, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. Praise the nations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes. We'll do these separately or altogether?
Sorry.
Approval of the minutes. Want to do them separately or altogether?
I'd say I'd... I make a motion we do them all together, if that's all right with everyone in it.
This is approval of the minutes for the budget workshop, public hearings, regular meeting, and public hearing on June 3rd. And a motion in a second.
Second.
And a motion is second to approve the minutes altogether. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. And we have approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, before you, I just handed out another agenda. It's got two things. We added it in red. Of course, we have with us today members of Ridgeview West Little League 11 and 12-year-old softball team, and propose we add them right before Appalachian Voices, so make it 6A and a 6B there. And then under item 7, new business, item E, Mr. Sturgill provided to us right before the meeting, he'd received an email on a Henry Shing settlement with opioid litigation, and it would require approval to be signed for proceeding that settlement, so.
And you want to do J for the team?
What does this go with?
It goes with the 7E. That's the opioid litigation.
Okay, okay. I make a motion that we approve the agenda with adding 6A Ridgeview West Little League 11 and 12-year-old and item 7, E, opioid litigation.
Got it.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
All right, now, is we down to public comment?
No.
Let's see.
We were just on the regular agenda.
The consent agenda.
Because consent agenda is now.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself.
Yeah.
All right, we have the consent agenda now.
You want to read them?
Approval of the expenditures, county administrator's report, drug court, community work program, animal control program, fire and rescue report, litter control report, building official report, and the sheriff's office report. Sheriff, would you like to present your report?
If you don't mind, please.
You've been absent for several months.
I know. I apologize. I've been unavailable. I know you've got a huge agenda tonight. Probably be here a while, but I appreciate you letting me do it. I won't keep you very long. Just go over a quick report for the month of May, the sheriff's office. You've got to have the same information in front of you. And as always, if you've got any questions about it, you can just ask. So start out, it looks like our dispatch for the month of May received 1,889 calls for service. Some of those, and like I said, I'm just going to skip through most of them. Some of those calls were related to traffic stops. Looks like we had 50, our deputies conducted 50 traffic stops in the month of May. We served 175 civil process papers. We assisted 55 motorists with keys. We had a total of 33 motor vehicle accidents. We had four juvenile transports. Looks like all of those went to Bristol. We had one criminal transport that went to Winchester, Virginia. We had two extraditions that went to Kentucky and Tennessee for those extraditions. We made a total of 47 arrests in the month of May, and our deputies patrolled 28,972 miles for the month of May. Auxiliary hours worked was 156 hours. And I know I've talked to you about this before, but those auxiliary positions are very important. We're probably going to look at trying to add a couple over the next couple of months, but those guys really help out a lot. We had the Dr. Ralph Stanley Festival up on the mountain. That's a big crowd every year, and it requires a lot of attention from us. And we always have Kestrel Keith. He's one of our auxiliary members. He's always there, every, every day, every night. He takes a camper up there, but he represents the sheriff's office and the county well. You look at our mileage report. I told you we had a total of 28,972 miles. Looks like the vehicles, we've got 1, 2, 3, you've got five of those vehicles over 100,000 miles. We're in pretty good shape with vehicles. And again, I think, couldn't thank you guys enough for what you've done for us and the vehicles. We're in better shape with, with vehicles than we have been in a long time. That's really all I've got. You guys have any questions for me?
I know.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve all of them with the sheriff making his in person tonight. I make a motion we approve all, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I.
I'll second that. We have a motion is second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Now, we're down to public comment. I'll have the attorney to go over our guidelines.
Upon recognition by the chairman, the speaker shall address himself to the chairman, and if at the conclusion of his remarks, any member of the Board of Supervisor desires further information, the member will address the speaker only with the permission of the chairman. Time limits. There shall be a time limit for each individual speaker of three minutes. A representative of a group may have up to five minutes to make a presentation. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of his or her presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesman. Speakers are not permitted to donate time to other speakers. No speaker's time shall be extended except by unanimous consent or a two-thirds vote of the board members present. Prohibited conduct. Persons appearing before the board will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use profanity or vulgar language, use language which insults or demeans any person, and/or when directed at a public official or employee when not related to his or her official duties. However, citizens have the right to comment on the performance, conduct, and qualifications of public figures, make frivolous statements, interrupt other speakers, or engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting, engage in behavior that intimidates others, and address the board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, or affairs of the county.
Thank you. Anyone like to make public comments? You step up to the podium. Tell us your name and where you're from.
Good afternoon. Everybody knows me. I'm Dale Mullins. I'm chief of Sandry's Volunteer Fire Department. We came over last month asking for some help on buying a water skid for our pickup truck. Since then, we have received a $5,000 donation for this water skid that is to be used, nothing for this project. We can't use it for anything else. And we was just hoping maybe the board could either finish paying the balance or at least match the donation that we have. As of right now, we have already ordered this skid. I mean, because our community needs it. And since then, we have decided to sell the brush truck to recoup some of our money that we have to spend on this, because we cannot afford to keep putting money into this truck. As you know, we've spent over $18,000 in our own money trying to get this truck running, and it's been out of service for two years. So with that being said, you know, we could appreciate, we appreciate any help y'all can give us, and we appreciate everything y'all do for us. Y'all have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Anyone else? If you'd like to call in for public comment, the number's 276-333-0357.
Mr. Horton, did you want two of the people who are going to speak from the Ridgeview team, do you want them to do it at public comment, or do you want them to do it?
I think they're already on the agenda, so they can speak.
Okay, all right. So you can do it then, okay?
I bet.
Yeah. Big crowd. I figured there'd be four or five.
I think they're here for the softball. It's a lot more loud. It's louder in church than it is here.
It is, isn't it?
Mr. Chairman, if we don't have any calls and no one else at public comment in the audience, I make a motion we close the public comment.
All right, and a motion close of the comment.
I'll second it. It don't seem like we had anybody.
And a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. We'll be down to 6A, Ridgeview West Little League 11 and 12-year-old softball team.
And you need them to come up and get their certificate.
If y'all like to come up, we got your certificate we'd like to present to you.
He made them make pictures, too?
And they won. They won what exactly?
Do I?
What, they were champions in what?
District 13.
District 13. And how many, how many did you compete against?
They all starred.
There was Janice, Waz, and Orton. There was...
Over.
Over, yeah. And did you beat all of them?
Yep.
All right, way to go.
Most of them in the 16th, and they were milked behind the show. How's your shirt? He has my shirt.
We'll give certificates out and we'll get a photo with you if you don't care. Faith Turner.
Is the other coaches here? They can come up with them.
Wayne is.
If we got coaches, we want to have them in the picture.
Grace Hitt. Arsenal Lowes. Allison Lowes.
Is Carter?
She is on vacation.
Oh, okay.
Dana Smith.
She is not here.
Is she not here?
Is she not here?
Taylor Spiro. Marley Bar. Marley's not here.
Marley is.
Billy Robson.
Jimmy not here.
She's at high school, too.
I'll write that one.
Willis. Is that yours, Shelby?
Yeah, that's the end.
She might have heard me. They're all heard me.
Lucy eight.
They got their districts. Is most of them now?
If we get our board to come up with them, we'll get a picture of everybody and then...
Stanley and Willis, which is the most.
We just got to get up here.
How many?
Let's get everybody to stand up on the stage if we can, and then board, if y'all want to get in their wits, maybe on the back row.
Let me take a picture for you.
I'm good, thank you. I'd be glad to take a picture. Everybody getting in? All right, let's get everybody in the picture here. Two, three, so 1, 2, 3. All right, I got you. Congratulations, girls. Y'all did a great job.
Give them to one of the coaches.
Logan's playing in All-Stars tonight.
And if they want to speak, they can, right?
Yeah, they can.
I think two of them was.
Five just want to speak for us.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Faith Turner. I'm here with my teammates. As champions, we represent Ridgeview District 13 in all of Dickinson County. Thank you to all the board members for allowing us to come and have a place on the board's agenda. We have played hard to get here, had fundraisers to help raise money for our trip to Yorktown. We're proud to be going and representing our county. I realize, as county officials, you have to make hard decisions on how to spend the county's money. I can't think of a better way to invest in these young ladies and support us and help us get to state. We're about 15,000 short. Our goal, 25,000 needed to go. We need to pay for a hotel reservation soon. I want to thank God for giving us the ability to make it to state. I'm asking you, the board, to find it in your hearts to send us to Yorktown. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Faith.
Thank you, Faith. That's good. You done do that.
So Faith covered most of it. I just wanted to reiterate what an honor it is for this team. They're among the top 14 teams in the state of Virginia. There'll be 14 competing there. So we went undefeated through the, through the district, and we would like to have any assistance we could on helping us cover our accommodations. The cost of the trip is quite substantial, and as a nonprofit, the little league depends heavily on generosity of community leaders and local businesses to make these opportunities possible. Your support would not only ease the financial strain of the families, but also provide these young athletes with a chance to compete at a higher level. This experience creates lifelong memories and fosters a sense of pride in their accomplishments. Thank you for your time, and considering our request, we appreciate any amount you can contribute. Thank you for your time and considering our request, we appreciate any amount you can contribute.
You didn't tell them that this makes two years in a row that this team has gone. Almost every one of them have gone last year.
That foretells good for Ridgeview Middle School and High School, you're in middle school.
Middle school, they're living.
Everybody looks good for the varsity.
Our next we have Kara Doten, Appalachian Voices.
Uh, can we go ahead and vote tonight so they'll, they can leave? Uh, if we can give them any money? Or you want us to do it later?
You, you can, I mean, it's on the agenda, you can make the motion. I, I think there's a policy in place that, that you'd have to vote to suspend the policy in order to be able to give them the money.
To do it tonight?
Correct, but, but you can make that motion to do that.
I make a motion that we suspend our policy that, uh, we don't have to wait 30 days because they have to leave July the 3rd. And we couldn't wait 30 days for them to give them some funding. If we vote to do so.
How much are you proposing to give?
Mr. Horton?
Yes ma'am.
How much do you, well, we have to vote to suspend the policy that we have first, correct?
Well, there could be discussion about amounts that's going to lead to the suspension, but at the same time, in order to formally adopt, there'd have to be an amount, but.
Do you feel like we can give them some money to go on?
Things whatever the pleasure of the board is, I can work out whatever the board wants me to work out, so.
Uh, John, if we was to vote out 10,000 cadet veterans there with what you've made at? And then I've bought, I made a personal donation today. And I know Buchanan sent theirs and paid for it once, right? And then you've got a Wise team that's gone, but, and Casey coaches it, but I think they've got sponsors over there that pay for theirs. That they don't have to go to the board meetings. These girls have worked hard, I've seen how hard they've worked at the car wash, I'm happy to work all day that they did. And then they stood out Saturday in the sun, taking donations up in Norton and at the flea market. Y'all make 800 together, right? About 800 is what they made up there. So their time is running short in getting their money. So before we can give them anything, we have to suspend the policy. And I made a motion that we suspend it. Twenty seconds.
Well, the motion dials for lack of a second. I think each board member has an opportunity if they want to donate out of their discretionary funds.
Yeah, I personally will donate money to you out of discretionary funds.
So you all are saying that they're not going to get to go?
No.
How much are you gonna do, 2,000 each?
I don't have 2,000, my discretionary fund. I was thinking about getting, maybe giving 500.
I just know we've, we've held true to not going out with the budget. To, to give any money out to the fire departments, rescue squads, anybody, I just don't actually see how we can do it.
Well, Richard, you have the most students out of your district, I think you have the most. Uh, Willis has quite a few. Uh, Peggy has some, I have one, you have one or two.
I, I don't personally, I don't know, uh, probably Faith.
I understand that, but also I know we had to cut 250,000 dollars out of everybody's budget in the county. And I personally just don't, just don't know how we can.
I would think that we have some money left over from, uh, this year's budget that we wouldn't be spending to some that's left over that we would have to transfer back, correct?
I do have some, like, for money here and there in the budget, so.
That we could do it. Well, girls, I've tried, that's all I can do. And remember this, that, you know, I have supported you, I've been to your games. I've supported you, I've hollered for you, I've cheered for you, and as, this tournament has been nail biters for me. Cause you've won them in the last few minutes, and it's been nail biters for me, and I'm so proud of all of you. And I hope you get to go, but I see no way that you're going to get to go without the money. Because it's too late to earn another $10,000.
It's disappointing that.
Do what?
It's disappointing that our, like, officials are not investing in youth of all things.
Yeah. I know they've worked really hard. Between Tammy and I, we did 30 pounds of baked goods, uh, my daughter-in-law Tammy, we did 30 pounds of baked goods.
I wouldn't say we don't invest in youth, we give the school way more money than, than what their operating budget is, the school should chip in on.
It's a school-sponsored event, Little League's not a part of schools, so why don't you go to your Little League programs? Where are you getting those?
And we went to our small businesses, I mean, we have a business, we have done all that we can do, we bought uniforms, you know. We're trying, I mean, we can only, we don't have enough businesses here in our county to support these clubs either.
Like Wise County, they've got, they've got two that's going to fund them to go to state. And they go to, is it Reston? I, I looked it up, Reston, it's still up in Northern Virginia. And these girls go to Yorktown, and the hotel and everything's more expensive during the Fourth of July. So, of course, I've done all I can do, so.
Members of board, if your discretionary funds anyone wants to give from those, if you can let me know, we can get a check issued to them, you know, quickly on that.
I do not say.
We can get that, uh, turned around to them before their trip, so.
Yeah, it's not that, that I don't support you, I mean, I don't go to the games because I never have no idea when any of these games are. I don't know that, I see too much of it on Facebook where the games are held at, or where they're played at, but.
The schedule's always on Facebook.
But if, if another team with Little League wins and goes on, and they come for money, I just don't know how that we have the money to do that amount to, to all the teams.
Do we have another team that's in, still in the running or not?
Yeah, they're playing tonight, they've won two games and they play tonight, which also includes a grandson of mine. But, I mean, unless, yeah, we do, 5,000 or something.
Alright Kara?
Good luck girls, have a safe trip, if you get to go.
Hello, everybody, can you hear me okay? Sure. Okay, great. My name is Kara, I'm from Wise, um, but I spend a lot of time in Dickinson County here. I spend a lot of time on Pine Mountain, on the Birch Knob section, so Dickinson County's very near and dear to my heart. Um, today I don't have necessarily a proposal, I'm just here to talk a little bit about the work that we've been doing in Dickinson County, but more specifically in Clinch Co., I've been partnering with them for a while now, since we got an EPA grant, um, where we got to identify five communities that we would work with, sort of do these deep dive listening sessions. So, um, today I'm just presenting on partnering for a stronger Dickinson County. Uh, my colleague AJ, I think, just passed out some copies of this, so you can follow along. Um, so my contact information is on the front here if you have any questions and want to follow up. On this second slide here, it's just a little bit about us at Appalachian Voices. I won't bore you with all of these details since you have them in front of you. Um, but just generally, we are not the only office in Norton, Virginia of Appalachian Voices. There's also an office in Charlottesville, and Boone, and Knoxville, and we also have some folks who work with us in West Virginia, some folks who work with us in Kentucky. And in general, our work all centers around, um, job creation, increased access to clean energy programs like solar, disaster resiliency, and specifically AJ and I work for the new economy team, um, which works out of our Norton office that opened in 2015. Some of our notable recent projects that we've worked on, like I mentioned, includes the Community Strong Program. And this started in 2024, and it came from a grant from the Environmental Protection Agency. So this grant was basically set up so that we could go into these five communities, and they're listed here, Clinch Co., Daint, Dungon, and Pennington Gap and Pound, all out of the Coalfield Counties, and do some deep listening sessions about what folks are identifying as the biggest issues in their community, how they want us to address those issues with them, what sort of funding we can go after, what kind of projects we can work on. And we had three of those so that then folks could go in and vote to prioritize which of those projects we would work on. Um, so I'm not going to go over everything on the bottom of this page, you can, you can read it, it's just some stuff that we've worked on in terms of policy and economic wins. Um, and then another notable thing is we just had our first ever annual Southwest Virginia Solar Summit, and that was this year. Um, so doing some exciting things in the larger community, but then if you want to flip to the next page, I'll talk a little bit more about what we've been doing in Dickinson County. So Amler, the abandoned mine lands, um, reclamation project. So there's some lobbying efforts that Appalachian Voices helped in to establish the Amler program, to get money to revitalize abandoned coal mines and abandoned coal areas. And then some of that money has gone to projects that specifically have impacted Dickinson County, the Crane's Nest Trail and portal closure, which is very beautiful, um, Trammell Community Revitalization, splash dam water line extension, and then some funds going to the Brakes Interstate Water Park Expansion, so those funds are listed here. We also partnered with a local mutual aid group, uh, for flood recovery during the most recent flooding events in, um, 2025 in February, specifically in Clinch Co. And, um, in the past have worked on other sort of emergency responses for folks who need things like clean drinking water or, um, non-perishable foods during emergency weather events. Um, and then the Power Plus Resolution, which is basically just a campaign to get resolutions of support from local government bodies like yourselves in support of the Power Plus Plan, which at the time included the Reclaim Act. But what I really want to talk to you tonight about is Clinch Co. So if you flip to the next page, I'll talk to you a little bit about some of the projects we've been working on there. Like I said, they were part of this EPA Environmental Justice Collaborative Problem Solving Grant. Many federal funds right now are being terminated, and this is not an exception. We did receive a termination notice for the Environmental Justice Collaborative Problem Solving Grant. However, it was at about the middle point of that cycle, and we're still committed to working with Clinch Co. We've still been, um, having our bi-weekly calls with the staff there, making sure that we're staying up to date on the projects that they'd like to pursue and helping them try to find funding for those. Um, current work, we're working with the Department of Energy on a Virginia energy resilience study, and if that sounds familiar, it's because I just sent you an email about it. So, um, there's a stakeholder meeting in the morning if you all are able to attend, that should be in your emails. But this was $10,000 to fund a study of different community resilience hub possibilities. And what that means would basically just be outfitting one of the buildings in Clinch Co. that would be walkable for folks, so that if we had some sort of weather disaster, people would have a place to go that would have backup energy, probably solar storage, probably also equipped with a gas power generator, um, for backup power. It would have canned food, a place for people to sleep, and potentially a place where people could go and just charge their phones, um, get the emergency things that they need. So we're hosting both stakeholder and community meetings to inform how we're going to do that process, and then hopefully finding funding to make that project happen. The ARC Ready Local Government Grant that we helped Clinch Co. write, um, they got that grant and it meant that they got to pay a slightly higher salary. It also meant that they got to hire some additional capacity for their town, so we were really excited about that. Hopefully it will just continue to, um, provide more opportunities for them to go after grant funding. Mine Land Relief, um, spelled wrong on purpose, like a pun. Our carbon team is working on removing the autumn olive and reforesting Clinch Co. site with native hardwood trees, and then enrolling it in a carbon project. So we're sort of in the middle of a discussion with the landowner towards access through purchase or lease for that project. And then there's also just future opportunities. There is a CDAC design that we got from VT that has drawings, including things like, um, a flood mitigating dog park downtown. There are, um, items in there that would update the park that's currently on Mill Street. There are items in there that would help us design an athletic complex that we could potentially put somewhere downtown. Um, hopefully that resilience center will be part of this. Um, we've been working with the Cumberland Plateau Planning Commission to try to figure out ideas with them as well. And then all of this, how we can tie this back into flooding resilience. So that's just some of the things we've been working on in Clinch Co. So, lastly, and I'll just go ahead and, um, talk through these collaboration opportunities. I just wanted to come and basically say that what we do is provide technical assistance, like we've been doing for Clinch Co. And that's something that we want to continue to do for communities who are interested in these kinds of projects. So, um, things that we want to work with you on. There's the Just Transition Platform, which is currently, the feedback that we got from all of those sessions that we had with our five communities, we took the information and the data that we had recorded there, and counted basically the number of times that something was mentioned to try to find this, like, quantitative way to order these things. And made outlines of state policies that are non-partisan that could potentially help us achieve the things that our communities would like to do. So we are currently writing that, and we would be interested in sending that to you all to see if it's something that you would agree to support. It will have five sort of big themes throughout, so dilapidated buildings and brownfields, how to address those abandoned properties, economic development growth, which is obviously huge in the coalfields, energy, environmental protections and resiliency. So really, most of what came up around that was flooding, and then healthcare access. We also provide that ongoing technical assistance, so if other groups in Dickinson County, other towns are interested in working with us, we would love to hear from them. Um, I have my colleague with me tonight, AJ, who's going to briefly present a black lung resolution to you all. Um, so that's another way we can partner. And then lastly, just this commitment that we want to make from the Community Strong Process, or that EJ CBS Listening Session Process, that we want to follow through by, um, continuing to figure out ways that we can help these communities in applying for funding and partnering with you all. Um, so thank you so much for having me, and thank you for your time. Um, I'm going to invite my colleague AJ to finish.
Hey y'all, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Annie Jane Cotton, and I work with several of the Black Lung Associations across, um, Southwest Virginia and Eastern Kentucky. Uh, unfortunately, the Black Lung Association members who are going to be here with me tonight had doctor's appointments and were traveling for those, and so were unable to attend. I'm here tonight to ask the board of supervisors to consider and pass a resolution in support of increasing the rate of black lung benefits to match the pace of inflation. As you know, Dickinson County has a long history of powering the nation through coal mining. We know that our coal miners are some of the hardest working men and women, and that they deserve to be able to support themselves and their families. Unfortunately, we also know that coal mining is a dangerous and often hazardous occupation. Miners are often diagnosed with black lung, and once disabled, they're unable to continue to work. Black lung benefits are not currently tied to the rate of inflation. This means that as the prices rise, um, on, on general goods and just life, um, the spending value of those federal black lung dollars decreases over time. Those spending, that spending value has decreased over 30% since, um, 1969, when the Black Lung Benefits Act was approved. While the numbers are an estimate, we do believe that around 400 people right here in Dickinson County receive those black lung benefits. And so if you consider the impact that might have on the local economy, raising those benefits to match the cost of inflation would, um, lift their spending dollars, and they generally spend those dollars locally. I think we all know that inflation and rising costs are hitting all of our families pretty hard right now. But I think particularly for folks who have been disabled, who are no longer able to work, and especially for our coal miners, um, those benefit levels must. and especially for our coal miners, those benefit levels must rise to meet the cost of inflation. Now, I'm not asking today for y'all to give any money to this. This is a federal, this is a federal fund, right? And there are state level funds as well. And so what I'm asking for y'all to do today is to be a part of a larger project that the Black Lung Associations across the states are working towards, which is passing resolutions urging Senators Tim Kaine and Mark Werner, along with U.S. Representative Morgan Griffith, to support and vote for legislation such as the Black Lung Benefits Act on a federal level. And those senators have historically been supportive of that act, but they have extra oomph when they get the county level support behind them as well. I hope that you take this opportunity to let miners in Dickinson County know that you support them and recognize them and honor their contributions to our homes and that you want to see them supported with a livable black, black lung benefit when they're disabled. Thank you. And I don't know that you can vote on it tonight without, I'm not sure. I'm not asking for anything, so I wondered if you could pass the resolution tonight. I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
I don't promise you that this board will do it, but we can.
All right. Can we, Larry, legally?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we pass this resolution for black lung, to support black lung.
All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question or two?
Yeah.
With Appalachian Voices, you received my AMLR, that is from...
Sorry, I don't hear well, let me...
I'm just trying to understand the difference between you and RAFT, the RAFT program. They seem to be doing the same thing you're doing, any sort of redundancy.
That makes sense. So that's the group, we're not associated with that group, but that was the group that was working with UVA Wise to do listening sessions. Yes. So if I, don't, don't quote me because I'm not positive, but I think they were actually operating also with EPA funding that was terminated and won't be able to follow through with the effects of those studies. Am I correct on that? Was it the change?
Dickinson and Carroll County were prior awards that will continue. The EPA funding that they lost was expanded to some additional counties. I had a meeting with them again yesterday. Everything is moving forward, and they're going to assist us in the upcoming year with some of the items that were selected in the last workshop.
Oh, good. So they did listening sessions.
Yes.
Were they with the UVA Wise group?
University of Virginia, actually, and they partnered with the University of Virginia College of Wise. But we hosted listening sessions in all three towns. And then we had a couple of events here combined countywide here at the building. And so, you know, take all the input from them, and they've kind of got our agenda, what we're working on, the six items that we're moving forward with over the course of the next year.
Yeah, it sounds like a super similar structure, but we are not part of them. We started doing this in...
It's something that y'all should merge into one.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
It makes sense. I think that's what a lot of people, I looked over your, your, your program here, and you, you get money from federal.
Yes, yeah. We get some federal and state funding.
It is just about, about, because I've attended some of those meetings, and it seems like it's just about the same thing. Isn't there a problem with AMLR funds, Larry?
No, we're moving forward with our AMLR projects right now. We've had a couple of issues recently, you know, mainly when it comes to construction projects with the federal interest. There's, you know, perpetual federal interest. We've kind of worked through that. And of course, right now, they've changed some stuff on reimbursement, but we've kind of worked through both of those, and we are moving forward with, with our Renning-in-One Grants, so.
I see where you spent over a million dollars, a million, and I don't have the, what, you probably know.
You mean on the AMLR projects listed there? Those aren't ones that Appalachian Voices actually did. That was put there because we helped establish the AMLR program, so that was just there.
You didn't receive that money?
No, that was mine.
Well, how do you function? Does the federal government, you're employed by...
I'm not employed by the federal government.
But you're employed by Appalachian Voices.
I'm employed by Appalachian Voices, so we get money from the federal government, from the state government, from private sources, from private donors. We have a bunch of different sources of income.
So how many employees do you have working for you?
Out of the Norton office, I would say maybe 13? 13, but that's also not only people who are working in Norton. Some of those folks also work in West Virginia. We have someone who works in Kentucky for us, so it's a pretty widespread group. And not all of them work on the same types of projects either. So while the new economy team, we're mostly working on like coal impacts and things like that with folks who live here. We have people who are in North Carolina and Tennessee and in central Virginia who are working on things like gas extension pipelines, things like that. So it's a big company.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and hope to see some of you tomorrow at our stakeholder meeting, so please.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Senator President.
You're welcome. A lot of coal miners that's suffering with black lung that's being turned down for irregular...
I know, I was just at the, at the National Clinic GAT Conference, and several of the sessions at the conference were about like how to not give up on your benefits when, when, because it's just such a tedious process. So part of, actually, part of what would happen with the Black Lung Benefits Increase Act is that it would streamline that process for people even getting their benefits because often the costs associated with even just the doctor's trips to, to get a diagnosis, which is what you need to get the benefits. Even that is like really hard for people when they've lost their income and they don't have those benefits yet, you know? So the part of what that, that act would do is just make it easier overall, and also for widows and for, for dependents to, to have access to those funds. So we're just really trying to make that process better for people.
Well, thank you for presenting the resolution.
My husband worked 21 years underground, and he went to the doctor, to pulmonologist, because he was having trouble breathing. I, I noticed it. And the doctor said he had lost a third of his lung capacity. But he said, "There's no reason for you to apply for black lung because you won't get it."
And that, we should...
I mean, he's just sad you, you can't get it.
It can take, I mean, I've had people, it took seven years for them to get their benefits.
It'd be dead if you...
And that, yeah, and by that time, you're so seriously ill, and you can't get your oxygen, you can't get your equipment, you know? It's just, it's really frustrating right now. And so we're just trying to make that easier for people. I mean, it's just a, you're already, you've, you've contributed so much, right? To, to both your community, but also the nation. You contribute so much. You literally power the nation, right? And then, and then they struggle to give you the healthcare that you have to have because of what you've done as an occupation. I mean, it's an occupation. And, yeah, people deserve better than, than that, so.
Well, we appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I suppose. Are you the one that, you meet with some of the coal miners and, are you the one that they meet with, like monthly and have meetings or?
Well, the Black Lung Associations meet monthly, so there's different chapters.
Oh, they're different, okay.
There's one in Drill, there's one in Big Stone.
There's one in Norton, I think, or?
There's one in Norton, maybe, I don't know if there's still the Norton chapter. But the different chapters all meet, and I have been going to all them, just trying to get, figure out what they need, because so often, you know, they don't have money. They're not, the, the Black Lung Associations aren't like funded by the government or anything. They're just, they're literally just groups of people who've banded together because they need even support for doctors' visits and stuff. So that's a lot of what they do, and they also fight for things like their legislation because, and, and just for like miners' rights, honestly.
Yeah, my husband worked 32 and high Fears underground. I mean, that was just for one company.
Yes.
And he's still fighting for his black lung.
I, I would really encourage you, I wish I had my, I don't have cards on me right now, but I will try, do y'all have, do you have cards?
It's on the rack. Each board member has a card there if you want to grab those.
I will get in touch with y'all and see if, if you're interested. Those Black Lung Association meetings can be really helpful places for, because a lot of the clinic folks who...
He has had history with the judge, but he was over the phone. They did everything over the phone.
We should, we should try again. I, I also know some...
We're waiting for the judge to rule on it.
We also know, I also, there are, there are lawyers who do this work specifically around black lung. And I know some that aren't awful and aren't like going to scam people with that. So I'll take y'all's cards if you're, and if you're interested, I'd love to talk to you more about it. Because it's not right, it's not right that y'all, as public officials, have spouses who still are fighting for their benefits, right? I mean, it's just not, it's just not fair.
Nobody that's worked 20 years in a coal mine should be denied black lung in the company.
No, absolutely not. It was automatically, I mean, and the pro, I'm so sorry, I'm just tired of that. One of the biggest problems right now is that if you're younger and you're working in the mines, there is, often people will start to have symptoms of black lungs. But if they're like, if they're, if you're in your 40s and you know the benefits won't cover the cost of raising your family, what are you going to do if the doctor says, "Hey, you're developing black lung and you're in the early stages of black lung"? I mean, you're going to keep working, right? Because you have to, because how else are you going to provide for your family? And so a lot of the younger folks in the mines now, we're seeing this like surge in black lung right now. And I think a lot of it is because younger folks are having to keep working because those benefits don't cover their costs, you know? I mean, you can't raise a family on $700 a month. You just can't do it.
We appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all. Thank you so much.
We're down to new business. First thing on the agenda is Spirithead Trailblazers Board of Directors appointment.
Do you want to talk to Kevin? He enjoys that board.
I have not spoken with him, but I...
I make a motion we reappoint him, because he does, I mean, he takes part in that.
He's very active, man.
Yeah.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion on that? We've got a motion in a second to reappoint Kevin to the board, Kevin Mullins, all in favor?
Uh, no.
I as well. All right, now we've got to go down to the resolution, annual plan for water and sewer.
Mr. Chair, we have two of these. Our first one, that are item V1, is for the town of Clintwood. And of course, according to the Code of Virginia, each year for the funds that are appropriated to Town of Clintwood for water and sewer projects and the PSA for water and sewer projects, they have to tell us, you know, what they intend to use those funds for, and the board has to approve that. So the Town of Clintwood is looking to use theirs towards a, they're expecting $53,450 in severance. And they are proposing to paint, prep and repaint two water tanks at Red Onion. It's approximately a cost of $300,000. They're covering the balance of that, but they want to use their severance here towards that project, so.
Do we...
We have to pass the resolution for this.
Yes, we have to pass the resolution.
I make a motion we let them use their severance for this construction project.
I'll second.
Well, we have a motion in a second to allow Clintwood to use their severance money for the project they've got presented. All in favor? I as well. We have the annual IM4.
Yes, I do.
The PSA is item two, and of course, Ms. Willis is our representative from the Dickinson County PSA. And with theirs, it's anticipated this year that they'll get $534,469. And the list they submitted to us, again, is like the Town of Clintwood law higher, about $919,000. A lot of that includes, they have a lot of debt reservice payments or debt service payments from prior projects that is eligible use of these funds. But at the same time, they're looking at doing a new Neely Ridge Interconnect project, which would definitely be a cost savings to the PSA if they could do that, to buy more money directly from the Water Authority. And they have a couple of other new projects, Clinchco Sewer Rehab and Backbone Low Gap. But again, they just sent those to us for approval by the Board of Supervisors. I'll say over to Ms. Willis if you don't want to elaborate anything or anything you'd like to share.
That Clinchco project is to help the sewer down in Hayside.
That's true.
It needs it bad down there, so.
Something we've faced problems with for quite some time, isn't it, Ms. Willis?
And then, you know, we're redoing all those old Buchanan pipes. We're still in the process.
Still in the process of doing that.
Doing those also. I make a motion that we pass this resolution. I can't, I'm... I make a motion that we pass this resolution.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to pass this resolution. All in favor? I as well. And now we have the John Flanagan Water Authority extension.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is something shared with us from the John Flanagan Water Authority. Of course, they were established back in the 70s, and when an authority is established, according to code, they're granted a 50-year life that can be, you know, renewed for another 50 years after approval from the, the bodies that come together to create the authority. Of course, that's Dickinson County, Buchanan County, Town of Clintwood and Town of Grunden. And so this resolution would basically just be allowing them to extend their authority for an additional period of 50 years, so.
We're not selling the water again, are we?
Not selling the water, so. The authorities are selling the water.
They sell, I mean, we have to buy our own water, right?
Well, that's the interconnect project that I mentioned there. They're looking to be able to buy some more water. PSA is directly from the authority instead of having to go through Buchanan County on that.
See, we're buying water from Buchanan County. Well, that's crazy. Well, that's true. We have to buy, well, from them.
So you're going to provide, buy it from, the, yes, they're going to buy it from the?
Flanagan.
The Flanagan, John Flanagan Authority?
Right, currently, they buy a portion of their water from the Flanagan Water Authority and a portion from Buchanan County, and of course, Town of Clintwood, all their extension from the Water Authority. And...
We're trying to...
Yeah, they're trying to increase the amount they're buying from the authorities through the Neely Ridge Interconnect project.
Well, is my understanding that the town, Mr. Chairman, I speak. Is my understanding that Town of Clintwood has increased their water rates. Is that true?
I've seen where they have advertised to increase their rates, so.
That's not worth it.
Because they're not getting a very small amount of severance money, $53,000 in comparison, half a million. Is that true or not?
Yes, it used to be that PSA received all the severance, and then, you know, before my time, the board had voted to give 10% of that to the, to the Town of Clintwood. PSA gets 90%, so.
Well, is there any way we could give, we don't have the authority. I guess somebody, PSA or something, would give Town of Clintwood more money to...
That'd be a discussion that has to be had at a future meeting if, if the board chose to add it to an agenda to, to change that split. Is that correct, Mr. Surgeon? Yes, yeah.
I would like to see them get more money.
And it's been brought up before, but...
Although I do recognize PSA's importance, but I would like to see the Town of Clintwood get more severance money. I believe they've raised their rates. I know that was an excuse before. They didn't have, their rates, their water rates weren't high enough to get a certain amount of...
There's this much higher than PSA.
Well, what, what, what does that mean, Larry? Has that not been a thing that's thrown up in the face?
Well, and again, this 10% split happened before my time as county administrator on that. But, you know, I think this is a discussion we need to have at a later time if it's something that we want to look at and decide on.
What could we raise that 10%?
Because right now, we're just looking to extend the water authority about 50 years, so.
I understand, but since I represent part of Clintwood, I would like to see them get more severance for their, work on their water and sewer line and for projects. That's something you say we'll have to talk about later.
Yep, better be the good out of that, but future meeting, remember.
Maybe at that time, we can have the mayor come and address us and whatever.
Sometimes, sometimes it's their place.
We need a...
They got 10% where they hadn't been getting any.
Your motion on the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second on the resolution. Just present it. All in favor?
Aye.
I as well. All right, insurance renewal, 25, 26, volunteer firemen's insurance renewal is first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you, in your packet, you have our renewal quote that we received from them, total of $133,223. This covers our volunteer firemen, and it covers our equipment, trucks, things like that, so. Well, rescue as well, I should say.
I started to get, you'd rescue also, wouldn't you?
Yeah, it's rescue as well, so. And this is, uh, pretty well in line with what we paid this year, you know, we're always thinking it'd be about a hundred, you know, thinking it'd be about ten thousand more, but we come in pretty well in line with where we're at this year. And they came, uh, this past Friday, we had a meeting with them, the first time, um, I know Dale, uh, was at the meeting, it's the first time really ever that we've known him coming out to meet with us, and I heard some positive information came from the meeting. So, um, you know, trying to work with them.
If I may ask Larry a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, so, this a hundred and thirty-three thousand is what the county pays for their insurance?
Yes, ma'am.
And does that cover them? Does that cover each person who?
Yes, yes, ma'am, if they were to get injured while on a, on a call, and it also caught coverage, if there were to be an accident with the equipment or the trucks or anything, uh, it covers that as well, so.
It covers active members, am I correct?
Correct.
And how much does that coverage provide, do you know?
Uh, for them on the, uh, volunteers, I think we're at fifty thousand dollars, I think, on that right now.
I make a motion that we accept this proposal of the insurance renewal for the firemen and rescue.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. All right, we've got the twenty-five, twenty-six VA Corp insurance renewal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, again, in your packet, you have before you our renewal with VA Corp. Uh, they cover, uh, all of our buildings, all of our property that the county has, all the county vehicles. It covers our workman's comp, it covers our cyber coverage, it covers our crime, our liability, uh, all those things. And of course, our premium this year is two hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars. Again, pretty well in line with the, uh, the current year with where we were, we're pretty stable with that. And obviously, I was projecting about a ten percent increase, but, you know, we come in less than that, so. Uh, we have a lot of property and a, uh, a lot to cover, so this is a very reasonable rate, in my opinion.
I make a motion that we approve that, uh, insurance on those buildings and property.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in the second for the VA Corp insurance renewal, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Next is, uh, seven D, approval of the emergency operations plan, which is up for renewal first of July?
First, this plan has, is required to be updated every four years, and of course, this is our four-year update. It's very similar to our last plan, there's been a few changes based on, you know, updates that's occurred during that time. But, uh, again, you know, Mr. Thacker is our emergency management coordinator, and he has reviewed this plan after we got a draft on it in detail, and I think you said everything looked okay upon it, Mr. Thacker, so.
Yeah, it does.
Which asks the board to consider approval of the plan, the updated plan.
I'll make a motion that we approve this emergency operations plan.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second to approve the emergency operations plan for January, or July of the first, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
We looked down at item E, and we had that addition there, hope you will.
We have the opioid litigation.
Yes, Mr. Surgeon, will you share that with us, um?
Uh, I will. And what we need tonight is, on this exhibit V, authorization to execute this document and to give the county administrator the authority to execute the document and sign on behalf of Dickinson County. Um, this opioid litigation's been going on, obviously, for an extended period of time. I believe Dickinson County first got involved in two thousand and eighteen, is my understanding, with opioid litigation. Through discovery, through, uh, according to, uh, our outside counsel, extensive discovery, they focused on Henry Shine, or Henry Sheen, uh, for potential settlement, because, um, in looking at the recovery and looking at their liability, that, in their terms, were, that, that they were discovered to be, have, have a de minimis, uh, contribution to the opioid problem. And so, they made a proposal for, for settlement. Um, their recommendation is that we adopt the settlement as presented. Um, yeah, this company has agreed to a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar settlement based on the previously approved, uh, distribution for Dickinson County. It appears that we would be getting five thousand eight hundred and, uh, approximately fifty-eight hundred dollars for the settlement.
I hope so.
Um, with that, we would ask for your approval, um, of the settlement document and for the county administrator to be able to execute the settlement document as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion that we accept this, uh, document and give Mr. Barton the authority to sign it.
All right. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Then we're down to the, uh, ordinance on providing payment of monetary bonuses to county employees, which is what we talked about earlier, the ordinance we need to pass.
Correct, Mr. Chair, we'll need two motions on this, we'll need one motion to, uh, pass the ordinance, and then the second motion will be the board's desire to give, you know, me, us authority to pay the bonus, uh, for our motion to the staff, so.
Okay. Right here, motion on the first one.
Yeah, we'll, we'll need a motion to, to pass the ordinance first. Yes.
I make a motion that we pass the ordinance.
Okay, got a motion, is it?
That provides the monetary bonuses.
I'll second it.
Got a motion in the second.
On this, you want to tell them that-
Yeah, and I think last year on bonuses, if you were personally going to benefit from it, you, you would say no.
You want, uh, Rhonda to second it?
I second it.
She said she can, okay, I thought Richard did, okay.
No, I don't.
Let's do a roll call vote on that, since we're gonna have-
Abstain.
Mr. Hall?
I abstain.
Ms. Kaj?
Aye.
And Ms. Willis?
I vote aye.
And I'll abstain as well, being a county employee.
These women voted for it.
Then we'll need the second motion to pass it.
We did, didn't we?
Is that the one that's on this?
I'm sure it is.
Then I make a motion that we pay a, uh, one point five percent bonus to all full-time county employees and to include the electoral board in this one point five percent bonus, and a bonus for part-time employees in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars, is that right?
Correct, and of course, the state has given that money, they specifically called out the electoral board on this, because in the past, they've always been excluded, uh, from bonuses, but they did provide money for that specifically, so. For the registrar.
Also, do we need to make the motion that if anyone's salary is less than five?
No, we can cover that, so.
Okay, we're done, good, we're done, good, thank you.
All right, we've got a, you made the motion?
I made the motion, I haven't heard a second.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in the second, Mr. Hall? How do you vote?
Abstain.
Ms. Kaj?
Aye.
Ms. Willis?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
And I'll abstain.
And, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, you've already voted, but I want to make a comment here, and of course, I'll share it with the staff. But the fact that we're giving the state, you know, added this one and a half percent bonus, what we're having to do on this, you know, this is going to be in lieu of the, uh, Christmas bonus as normally given. We will not be giving a, a Christmas bonus this year to the staff, so I will communicate that out with everyone to let them know ahead of time on that, this bonus they're receiving in July will be the bonus they're receiving this year.
We have Christmas in July.
Christmas in July, that's right, so.
Now we've got the board supervisors' salary ordinance. About to go on that.
I make the motion for, um, leaving the board of supervisor salary ordinance as it has been in the past. Fifty-five hundred dollars annually, with eighteen hundred dollars being added for the chair and twelve hundred dollars being added to that fifty-five hundred amount for the vice chair.
I'll second it.
All right, a motion in the second, we'll do a, let's just do the eye on that, I guess.
Aye.
Aye as well. And we got the general fund budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six.
Mr. Chair, on the general fund budget, we are gonna need five separate votes for that, and I gave a breakdown on that in the packet.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we remove commissioner revenues, that budget, emergency management budget, and the sheriff's budget from the general budget.
I'll second it.
All right, we've got a motion in the second to remove those offices from the budget, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I make a motion that we approve the commissioner revenues budget appropriation for fiscal year twenty-six, and we will prove it at five hundred and one thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight.
I'll second that.
We're gonna roll call them, these as well.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Hall?
Abstain.
All right, Ms. Kaj?
Aye.
Willis?
Aye.
And Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
I also. And next, we have the emergency management budget.
I'll make a motion that we accept the total emergency management budget at thirty-three thousand one hundred and twelve dollars. I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in the second, um, Mr. Hall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Kaj?
Aye.
Ms. Willis?
Aye.
And Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
And I will abstain.
Okay, number four here says, uh, a motion, I make a motion to approve the sheriff's appropriation for fiscal year twenty-six budget, uh, in the amount of three million three hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in the second, Mr. Hall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Kaj?
Aye.
Ms. Willis?
Aye.
And Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
And I'll abstain from that one as well.
Hey, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the general appropriations for fiscal year twenty-six budget with the commissioner revenue, uh, commissioner revenue, emergency management, and the sheriff's budget being removed, which leaves our general fund budget for the year twenty-seven million four hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars.
I'll second that motion.
All right, and motion in the second. Can we vote on that one, or we need, okay, Mr. Hall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Kaj?
Aye.
Ms. Willis?
Aye.
And Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
And I also.
And I'd just like to make a comment that with this operating budget of twenty-seven million, if you add the sheriff's budget into it, the emergency management into it, and the commissioner, we are operating this year on a thirty-one million three hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollar budget.
Yes, we are.
Which is, you know, four hundred and fifty-four, four hundred and fifty-five thousand or less than the current year we're in right now, so.
Oh, okay.
So.
We had a big cut this year. All right, next we've got the, uh, to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six coal and gas road improvement fund budget.
I make a motion that we approve the coal, gas, and road improvement fund budget of two million eight hundred and fifty thousand five hundred.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in the second, Mr. Hall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Kaj?
Aye.
Ms. Willis?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
I also.
And that is the same amount that has been used for years and years.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
We haven't taken anything above and beyond from the coal and gas road fund.
That comes out of severance tax?
Yes.
It's set aside for that.
All right, next we have the nine-one-one, fiscal, fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, E nine-one-one budget.
I'll make a motion that we approve the fiscal year twenty-six, two thousand twenty-six, E nine-one-one budget of one million forty-eight thousand and twenty-five dollars.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in the second, Mr. Hall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Kaj?
Aye.
Ms. Willis?
Aye.
And Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
And I also.
And we have, can I speak, Mr. Chair? We have met numerous of times, we have been here as little as four, five hours, up to eight hours, nine hours, discussing everybody's wishes, uh, and, and this has been a struggle this year. I mean, we started out with what we thought was a relatively decent amount to have to work with, and then it ended up being about a million and a half dollars to work with, and when you have to start going through all of those, and this has been some tough, it's been some tough meetings, some tough sitting here talking what to do and how to do, because we all know what we vote to spend and do is from you citizens, taxpayers. And we know that, and, and we try, we try to be as, as good with that money as we can possibly be. Okay.
Thank you.
Is that all right?
Absolutely. All right, next we have, uh, scheduled public hearings on the amended elderly and disabled real estate tax exemption ordinance.
Mr. Chair, if I could add on that, the purpose for, uh, the elderly and disabled and for the crazy and occupancy tax, in the, uh, this recent session by the General Assembly, there's been changes made to both of those that we had to update our language in, just to align with, um, with that. Nothing really changes in the way that we're doing things, or that affects the taxpayers in either one of those, just more language changes based on the-
Except for the elderly tax credit also?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's not changing any amounts or changing anything like that, it's just, uh, complying with the, uh-
With the Code of Virginia.
Yes, ma'am.
And all these are gonna be held on July twenty-second.
Right before our next board meeting.
First one at five-thirty-five, next one five-forty-five, and the next one five-fifty-five.
Is this where we, do we need to discuss in with this about our August board meeting, if we're gonna change that?
I think we can under other business.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry.
Oh, you're good.
Do we need a motion on that, or anything to schedule those, or?
We don't need a motion to schedule.
Uh, we do, we do need a motion to schedule.
I make a motion that we schedule these three, um, public hearings. And I think he's got the time down here, five-thirty-five, five-forty-five, and five-fifty-five.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Right, now we got the, uh, version of funds.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, this is, uh, more housekeeping stuff that's taken care of each year, as, as we close out the year. Of course, the treasurer's office is gonna be closed on Friday and Monday as part of their year-end closeout, and, uh, this, uh, gives the county treasurer, uh, directs him to revert the unexpendable balance of all funds, uh, back to the general fund on that, so.
I make that motion.
I'll second it. We have a motion in the second for the reversion of the funds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. And we need a approval of expenditure for June thirtieth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is more of a housekeeping item, uh, too, all the bills have been approved through today, June twenty-fourth. Any bills that- Any bills that come out from the remainder of this fiscal year, you know, June 25th to the 30th, gives us authorization to pay those, as we always do. And of course, anything that's paid, I'll share it with you all on that. Talk to you all ahead of time if there's anything out of the ordinary, so.
I make a motion that we approve the expenditures due July 30th and give Mr. Barton the authority to pay any payments that comes in.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second for the approval of expenditures to June 30th, 2025, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I as well. All right, then we're down to other business.
Okay, this is where I'll bring up where Mr. Barton had asked us, uh, board to consider what we might would be willing to do to help him out in the month of August. If we could move our board meeting back to the 19th to allow him some vacation time that week. And I would like to make that motion that we move our August board meeting to Tuesday, the 19th, instead of our normal Tuesday, the 26th.
All right. Thank you.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
I as well.
Now, I gotta change my calendar.
Yep.
Somebody else got any?
When does school start? I wish the
Teacher workdays, August 1st.
Yep. They, they come just a few days.
A month away.
Well, he's quick, yeah.
Seven.
All right, nothing else under other business. We'll go down to supervisors' comments. Mr. Willis, we'll start with you. Or Mr. Hall, I mean, sorry.
He represents a will, that's all right.
For everything to get me out of representing Willis this week.
I'd like to thank Mr. Barton over here for all the work he's put in since Dana's been gone. He's been working double duty. Been pretty stressful, I'm sure, trying to keep up with everything, and all the traveling and meetings and conversations, so we appreciate you
Thank you.
taking on that.
Glad to do it.
Keep the county going. So, and other than that, I hope everybody has a great 4th of July. Come out and enjoy the fireworks and all the activities and festivities, and let us be safe.
All right. Boy, and Ms. Kaj?
I'd just like to say again that the work that all of our board has put in, we've had some good meetings. I don't know if there've been any fist slaps. Nothing done on the tables to get through our meetings. We've all been relatively cordial, or very cordial, instead of saying rude. We've all been very cordial with each other and each department that has come in here. Uh, and it's a struggle. It, it takes a lot of thought. You go home and still think about what you can work on and how you can help people have. And, you know, sometimes not voting on giving money is, comes down to taxpayers' money. You know, what does, um, you know, how does taxpayers out there look at and see, uh, on what we spend money for? And, you know, sometimes it goes over what we want to do personally. So, um, I just wish everybody had, I mean, has a good summer, good vacations, safe vacations, good 4th of July.
All right. All right, Ms. Willis?
I'd like to thank Mr. Barton for all that he's had to do
Yes.
to pick up two jobs, really, and besides, I've called him a few times too, and, and everything, so I appreciate him. I'm really disappointed in my board that they didn't help the girls tonight, because I know they've worked hard. They practiced two and three nights a week, uh, to get where they're at. This is their second time that this team has gone to state. And actually, they do not have enough money even to pay their rooms now. So, it's disappointing they may not even get to go. And there is parents that cannot afford to pay for their rooms. And those girls have worked hard to make up all the money that they could possibly make. And I guess I'm disappointed that nobody even seconded to, uh, even, uh, change the policy for tonight. And, I mean, we could have done that and then have a discussion on the funds. And I'm, I'm really disappointed in our board. And especially those that had so many out of their district going to state. And I think that we hindered them from going to participate in state. And they have a great team. I, I'll go to their ballgames when I'm able. And they have a great team. Great coaches. And those coaches put in a lot of time, uh, sacrificing a lot of their personal time also. And there's 12 girls, and it takes 12 rooms. And their parents chaperone them.
Ms. Lewis?
I just, uh, thank Larry too. I want to thank Larry for all the work he's done in, in doing work for two, of two jobs, and I wish Dana a speedy recovery. And I hope and pray everybody has a safe and a happy 4th of July. God bless you.
All right, thank you. I'd just like to
Your turn.
Echo what everybody said about Mr. Barton, hard work he does, and all of our staff here. Works for the county, uh, our sanitation workers, maintenance workers, been out in this heat working the last couple of days, and I appreciate that. What they're doing, I'd like to caution everybody to watch the, the heat. You're out here weed eating, mowing and stuff. We had a, a bad call yesterday of someone that was affected by that, so. I would also like to stress the, the fact that I would love to be able to give everybody money that comes in here and asks for it. And if we do, the one, you, you need to do it for all. $25,000 is a, a huge ask from a board that tried to cut $250,000 in addition.
We didn't ask 25, we asked for 10.
Oh, well, that's what they said it cost.
It took 25 to go. They asked for 10.
Well.
They would have been happy with five. Same as the fire and rescue. I guess they'd be happy with some more money.
I guess my turn now. I just, I just think that we need to try to stay within budget, and I know it's difficult. And it's hard. And I know most of the students are from my district that's playing. And, and I'm sorry about that. I do intend on giving money, but I can't give it out of the general fund. I'll get it out of my discretionary funds. Other than that, I hope everybody has a safe and happy 4th of July, and I appreciate everybody coming and attending the meeting. And with that, we'll have
Can I have one more, one more thing? I'd like to say that our clerk is retiring. She has one more board meeting with us. One more. It, it has come around fast since she gave us the indication that she would probably be retiring, and we are going to miss you.
Yeah, we are.
We're gonna miss you.
I thought you changed him out. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second. Do adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.